Good evening. The January 9th, 2018 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. If needed, I would like to ask members of the audience to remove their hats, but I don't see anybody with hats at that time. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and they are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the table in the hallway. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 p.m. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Ms. Nancy Stacy, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Bobby James, District 3.
Here.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District 4.
Here.
Ms. Beth McCall, District 2.
Here.
Ms. Kelly King, District 4, 5?
Yeah.
Thanks. Dr. Heidi Mayer, Superintendent?
Here.
Mr. Paul Gibbs, School Board Attorney?
Here.
Ms. Judy Zanetti, Public Education Officer, please introduce the individuals who will be providing inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mrs. McCall, and thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for allowing me to be here tonight. It is my great honor to introduce you to Ms. Ruby Cox. Ruby is Marion County's School Related Employee of the Year. She currently serves as a paraprofessional at Reddick Collier Elementary School and very quietly in the back of the room, you may notice, Mrs. Vining, her principal, and Ms. Sirdum, her assistant principal, here to support her. Mrs. Cox has earned a bachelor's degree in computer information systems from Bethune-Cookman University, and she's currently working on her master's degree with Webster University. Before Mrs. Cox comes to the podium, I want to tell you a little bit about what Ms. Sirdum had said about her in her application for School Related Employee of the Year. She says, "Above all else, I would describe Ms. Cox as someone who truly puts children first. She has clearly shown in her actions and behavior that if it is what is best for kids, she will make it happen, even if it isn't necessarily always what is easiest for the adults." And isn't that who we want working with our children? In speaking with staff members, Ruby has been described as awesome, the best, and a team player. She's an integral part of our Reddick Collier team, and we would not be complete without her smiling face and strong work ethic. And I am proud to represent, to have Mrs. Cox represent our school, and she looks forward to her future success. And I'd like to now bring up Ms. Ruby Cox to the podium, Marion County School Related Employee of the Year.
Thank you. Good evening. If you don't mind standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am here this afternoon to give a reminder and to inspire each of you, including myself, that no matter what our responsibilities are in the Marion County public school system, all of us can make a huge impact on the lives of our students. Our students are the reason why we're here. Therefore, we must continue to remind ourselves that our energy, whether it's positive or negative, can change an environment and change a child's life. So let's continue to promote a positive culture of learning for all our students. I encourage each of you to continue to look beyond their outer shell and see our children's true essence. Every child is a blessing from the Lord. They are wonderfully made and was created for a special purpose. Therefore, we must recommit to drawing out their full potential to help them become their best self. We are blessed to be a part of a school district that cares about the service to our students and to our community. So let's continue to serve our students with joy, to inspire our students to become their best self, and to make a positive change in the lives of our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much, and we are very blessed to have you in our school system and working with our children every day. Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you.
Go ahead. Was that high? I'm sitting here looking at you, and I'm hoping that you will continue your growth in terms of your educational career, because I'm looking at someone that will have a tremendous impact, not only on the student, but on colleagues. And on behalf of all of the employees that are looking at you tonight, we want to thank you for a job well done.
Thank you.
I'm going to piggyback off what Mr. James said. As I listen to what you said, I, what you stated what you would like for the students with the, sorry, with being positive, you radiate that. You are positive, and we just thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
With the exception of Item PR 5.1 and JD 18-30 under Item 26.1, which have been withdrawn entirely, I recommend approval of the agenda for the January 9th, 2018 School Board Meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting. May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Seconded by Ms. King. Seconded by Ms. Boynton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the November 9th, 2017 Administrative Briefing and Work Session? Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. James. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the November 14th, 2017 School Board Meeting? Moved by Ms. Boynton. Seconded by Ms. King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the November 21st, 2017 Special School Board Organizational Meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. James. Seconded by Ms. Boynton. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the November 21st, 2017 Annual Board of Directors Meeting, MCS Leasing Corporation?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Ms. King. Seconded by Mr. James. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. And finally, may I have a motion to approve the minutes for the November 21st, 2017 School Board Meeting? Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Aye.
Seconded by Mr. James. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0. Mr. Kevin Christian, Coordinator of TV Media and Media Production and our Public Information Officer, is here to recognize those involved with the 2017 Christmas Parade.
Seems like so long ago.
It does.
But there are a lot of people that make that parade happen on the parade side of things, and I certainly want to recognize Mrs. Stacy and her work with Mrs. Mosley and all of those volunteers outside of the school system that truly coordinate that program that starts, well, I'm sure you're already planning the 2018 Christmas Parade. So kudos to Mrs. Mosley and her crew, including you, Mrs. Stacy, for that. But we have a lot of people in our school district that work very hard behind the scenes to make that happen. I would ponder this. What would that parade be like without our students? That means no marching bands, that means no MCYFL, or very limited, so we don't have the Pee-wee champs, the junior champs, and the senior champs. ROTC units would not be involved. It wouldn't be televised, because our employees worked to make that happen. So there are a lot of people behind the scenes that really work hard. You've seen those people listed in your packet, I'm not going to go over that list, but I would recognize Mr. McAtier, who worked hard to make that happen, and Joanne. You guys come on up here. This is not my show. These folks worked hard behind the scenes, specifically with our band units and with our ROTC units, to make sure they were there on time in the right place, representing us as well as they did. Anything else you guys want to add?
Just, Jo did a phenomenal job organizing, especially on parade days. Thank you, Jo.
It is a madhouse on parade day, right, Mrs. Stacy? In that staging area?
Horse's bucket on my side.
Yeah, literally. But on Southeast 25th Avenue where that staging area is, it's shut off to the public, and you all were there, you know what that's like, you took part as well. So we just wanted to say a special thank you to everyone involved. I would be remiss if I didn't thank my guys, who were on the other side of that wall, and an extended crew that worked hard to put the parade on the air, so to speak, on YouTube this year, several thousand views of that parade. So just lots of people to make it happen, who are never seen on the street during the parade. So kudos to all of them. We say thank you. And I just wanted you guys to know that.
Thank you. Ms. Stacy?
And I would like to say thanks to the school system, because this is the largest nighttime parade in the southeastern United States. A lot of the students really get excited about coming, because they know they're going to be filmed. They know they can go back and watch them on TV, they know they can send a copy of it, grandparents can tune into our situation, our computer system, and they can see it. And I just, it wouldn't be the same if the school system was not doing their part. And I know that, I mean, I was talking to Kevin, interrupting him during his busy times, talking about parade stuff, and I need him to do this and do that. So we all grab, we grab, you know, we grab you guys, and you helped me out when I needed help, and kind of at the last minute. And it's honestly, it, if different people were working in y'all's positions, it just wouldn't happen. Because it takes somebody who understands television, which that's where you came from, to make something like this happen. So a whole lot of things had to come together to have just the right people in place to put off the, to televise the largest nighttime Christmas parade in the southeastern United States. So thank you so much.
I want to say thank you to Ms. Crowder and Mr. McAtier. I know how much work that is, getting all those kids organized, and thank you so very much. I also publicly want to thank the Paglias with Florida Environmental Express, who were responsible for our float that we got to ride on. So thank you to the Paglia family and their gracious hosting. They had mugs for all of us, so it was lovely. So thank you very much, and thank you for all your hard work. It's quite a production.
We were thankful for the cold weather this year.
No, we weren't. It was really cold. Thank you very much. Ms. Shayna Horn, Director of Professional Development, is here to provide a presentation on the implementation of a district-wide child abuse training. Ms. Horn?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent. The Professional Development Department has collaborated with Employee Relations to create a child abuse training that will roll out mid-January. Dr. Mayer has mandated that all MCPS employees complete this training. There will be a certificate and a quiz at the conclusion of the training that will certify that this requirement has been fulfilled. Because of the importance of this training, our superintendent has recorded a video that we will embed in the PD that will be shown at the beginning, that you will have an opportunity to view after Ms. J.C. Oliver, our Executive Director of Employee Relations, shares her role as it relates to this training.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Ms. Superintendent, and Attorney Gibbs, and Ms. Julie. It's good to be here tonight. As you know, I am in the Employee Relations Department. We deal with all kinds of employee concerns and needs, ADA concerns, equity concerns, leave of absences for medical needs, of course, discipline, lawsuits, those type of things, contract issues. And in the scope of that work, we also receive all of the reports to DCF made by our employees and also community members if the report involves an employee and a child. So we have almost 7,000 employees in our county. We are very large, so you can imagine the number of calls that DCF takes and that come through our office. It's very, very important for these 6,000 some odd employees to understand that they are mandated reporters. We are all mandated reporters by state statute, by board policy, and as such, we have to follow that statute and make those reports. With that said, it is very important that we make sure the employees understand that they're a mandated reporter, but also understand how to make that report. This training takes them through that. It talks about the statute, it talks about policy, it will share with them what their responsibilities are, what abuse looks like, the type of abuse that we should be reporting, meaning, not that we shouldn't report some abuse, that it's physical abuse, sexual abuse, verbal abuse, and neglect, explaining what it is that we report, and just going through the procedure with our employees so that they understand. We are, in many cases, the first line of defense for our children, and that is our top priority, to keep them safe. So I'm very excited to see this training be rolled out, and I'm glad it's going to all employees. I feel like it's a very proactive, and of course, you'll hear more about it. That's what tonight is for, and a wonderful video, I understand, from the superintendent.
Hello, everyone. I'm Dr. Heidi Mayer, your Superintendent. By now, you know my passion for kids, and you know, we are here for them every day of the year. I'm so grateful you watch out for our kids in class, on the bus, at lunch, and everywhere else they go during the school day. Each one of us is an advocate for our kids, and each one of us has a legal and ethical responsibility to keep our kids safe. It's our duty to spot child abuse, even suspected child abuse, and to report it. The training you're about to take, in my opinion, is the most important training you'll take all year, because it directly protects our kids. I'm requiring every single one of our 7,000 employees to take this training, because it's that important. It's also mandatory, because our students depend on us, to not only educate, feed, and nurture them, but to protect them. Florida State Statute 1006 states all employees of the school district have an affirmative duty to report all cases, even suspected cases, of child abuse, abandonment, or neglect. If you and I report these in good faith, we avoid liability. Most importantly, we protect that child. I encourage you to listen carefully and seriously concentrate on learning how to better serve our kids. I'm depending on you, and so are they. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Anyone? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. King, McAtier, Director of Secondary Curriculum and Instruction, and Mr. Jody Phillips, Program Specialist, are here to share expanding high school athletic offerings for the spring of 2018.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Members of the Board, Dr. Mayer, Ms. Julie, and Mr. Gibbs. We are extremely excited to be here this evening to talk about new and exciting opportunities for our high school students. At our last board meeting, you heard about the many academic opportunities that our students have in high school at their fingertips. This evening, I have asked our Program Specialist for Driver Zed and Athletics, Mr. Jody Phillips, to come share some information on expanded athletic opportunities for our students. Mr. Phillips?
Okay. Come on up, couple of top. Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Mayer, Mr. Gibbs, Ms. Julie, thank you for the opportunity to be here and present tonight. We do have a little presentation, and we'll just kind of walk through it. Kevin will help us along, and I think you have the handouts as well to sort of go along. But anyway, this particular slide, something that we, you know, as we began to look at what we were offering our students and what was available to them, and what they might be interested in, the sport of beach volleyball came up from all seven of our schools, and certainly with the growth of indoor volleyball, beach volleyball is also growing at a very rapid pace as well. As an NCAA sport, in the last five years, as I have kind of coined it here lately, they've gone zero to 60 in five years. They have 60 competitive programs, and 11 of those programs are right here in our own state as well. And we even have a student that is, a former student, excuse me, is a former student that did not play beach volleyball for us, but she is competing on a beach volleyball team at the Division One level at the University of North Florida. And so our students, I think, are very interested in it, and to go along with the growth of the indoor volleyball program, the NCAA expansion, the offering of beach volleyball to our female student athletes just kind of becomes a natural fit for us. Listed here on this slide just gives you some information that pertains to our affiliation, who we will be affiliated with, and then our team and season structure as it relates specifically to the beach volleyball program. And we are anticipating quite a turnout. All right? Kind of jumping forward into the lacrosse situation. Lacrosse is and has been expanding both nationwide and statewide since 2009. The FHSAA has added over 200 boys and girls lacrosse programs across Florida that have added the sport. Locally, the goal is, of course, we had to start somewhere, and it will be to increase the enthusiasm and participation across the district, as we have seen schools in Lake County and in Alachua County add the sport, which is who our schools will mainly be competing against in the lacrosse arena. Also, along with that, just to mention, we also now have eight Florida colleges that also offer lacrosse as a competitive sport. Okay? Again, on this slide, you will see our, again, our affiliation with lacrosse and the FHSAA alignment and the structure for both the boys' and lacrosse programs that will take place at Forest High School. One of the things that we'll just mention as well is we did appeal to the FHSAA and were able to, we were granted the opportunity for Forest to compete in the state series as a first-year program, which is not necessarily the norm. So those students are very, and coaches and the school is very excited about having that opportunity, because they are very hopeful to be competitive in year one. Kind of, in closing here, our last thing, the funding for the beach volleyball, a good portion comes from the school internal funds. I was also able to work with USAV volleyball, and we got some grant money for the schools as well. And we did also have some leftover funds from the hurricane cancellations with our pool rentals that were in the budget, and we were able to kind of lump that together to help produce some seed money for the schools. Moving forward, they all realize it will be completely self-sufficient, and they are 100% on board with that. All seven schools are. The lacrosse program in and of itself is funded through the school and through the booster club that is there at the school. It is solely, so we are very excited and appreciate the opportunity to provide these things to our students.
Any questions?
I would say thank you, because the more sports we have them in, the tired, too tired they are to get into trouble.
Thank you very much. Very exciting. I will now ask the School Board's Attorney, Mr. Gibbs, to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the School Board tonight.
Thank you. Good evening. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the School Board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school, board, and school district matters. As a written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the hallway. Public speaker forums are also located on the same table. The completed forums were due to the School Board's Assistant no later than 5:40 p.m. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the School Board's meeting in order of receipt by the School Board's Assistant. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled by the end of the televised portion of the meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy only, a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name, identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements.
Board, we do have six individuals requesting to speak this evening, and I am requesting consensus to limit the time to three minutes for comments. Everybody okay with that?
Well, it's six. It's only six. Give him the five minutes.
Okay. We'll give him five minutes.
That's 30, isn't it?
Peggy Hostetler?
(inaudible).
Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Mayor, my name is Peggy Hostetler, Margaret C. Hostetler, H-O-S-T-E-T-L-E-R. I live at 21570 Northeast, 151st Court, Salt Springs, Florida, 32134. And I'm here as Vice President of the Bridges Project of Marion County, Ocala, inviting you all to come to the rollout event of our March Trilogy book distribution to the schools. May I hand out flyers to each of you?
If they're not provided in advance, we can't accept them.
You can't accept them. Well, let me show them to you. I'll leave some here. What it is, is a month from tonight exactly, on February 9th, that's a Friday evening, at Howard Academy Community Center, we will be having the rollout event with the opportunity of the donors of the books to actually hand the books to the schools that will be receiving them. And we'd love for all of you to attend that event, as we will be sending letters to principals and media specialists of all the schools. Each high school and middle school will be receiving two sets of books. This is the March Trilogy book set, and I believe all of you board members had an opportunity to spend some time with these. There are three books in each set, written by John Lewis, who was a civil rights advocate and activist during the 1960s, and then went on from there to be a congressman and still active as a congressman. He writes this book with the aid of Andrew Ayden and Nate Powell to make it interesting to the young people. It is a graphic comic book kind of book, so that they would love to read it. So the two sets that will be going to the school, one will be for them to check out, the other will be to stay as reference in the school system. We also have a curriculum that will be made available so that those, that our teachers in those schools will have a heads-up as to how to make use of the books in the classroom and invite student participation. So it's Friday night, February 9th, from 5:30 to 7:30, Howard Academy Community Center, 306 Northwest 7th Avenue, Ocala, 34475. Marion School's faculty, administrators, schools, parents, students, parents, local civic organizations, and community are all invited. This was a grassroots thing. We did have large contributions from a couple, but for the most part, all of the books were given by individuals to be used in the schools as a gift to them, both for an educational purpose and then for literacy as well, to encourage literacy among our students about something that's pertinent. Isn't it interesting that sometimes history can get lost, and that the students don't hear about things, and then it may not be presented in a way that's appealing to them? And that's what this does. These are award-winning books. They have received lots of awards throughout the years of their publication, and now it's a trilogy book set. They will be also gifted to our libraries in Marion County as well as the schools, and you may already have some of these books in the schools, but we'll be adding to that. And the Bridges Project, especially this work group of the Bridges Project, is for communication and education related to race relations. Do you have any questions?
I just want to thank you for that book, and it's called March. And she gave the school board that book, and it has three books in it together, and I read it, and it's so good. And it was so good that I even put it to my mother, and now my sister's going to read that, but we're going to give you a book five (inaudible). That was so good. Thank you so much.
On the 9th of February. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tanya Speig.
Tanya Speig, 15119 Southwest 29th Avenue Road, Ocala, Florida. My last name is S-P-E-I-G-H-T-S. I am here representing the Marion County branch of the NAACP. I am the secretary for the branch. I just want to read a statement. Marion County NAACP Branch Statement on Evergreen Elementary. "The Marion County branch of the NAACP expresses its disappointment and discontent with the strategies by the Marion County School Board to solve the educational crisis at Evergreen Elementary. First, we dismiss the narrative that the socioeconomic status of the students and the willingness, unwillingness of seasoned teachers to work at the school were stumbling blocks to achievement. Second, we express outrage that the measures approved by the support and supported by members of the school board to cookie cutter this zone by busing students past numerous top-performing elementary schools and to continue the same failed academic strategies that created this disaster. And third, we reject the attempt to include the community now and obtain feedback now for personal political resuscitation. While we firmly believe that this board has made disastrous decisions regarding Evergreen, we also recognize our failure as community leaders to participate, be informed, and remain active in the process to challenge decisions. As such, we accept our responsibility, and we accept the critique that we too are sounding the alarm too late. We support the board's willingness to prevent Evergreen from being transferred into the hands of charter schools or preventing the creation of the School of Hope, but we are concerned about the impact to close the school and reopen it as a magnet school. Looming budget cuts makes us weary that vital school resources will be transferred from poor children to affluent children who will comprise a larger percentage of this new student body. So where do we go from here? What do we do collectively as a community to support the students and staff at Evergreen? We begin by addressing the failures that created this monster. The argument being made that the school district's hands were tied by the Florida House Bill 7069, and the turnaround options are requiring a decision to close Evergreen. However, we challenge this premise and ask this board to save our students and save our schools by joining other school districts in lawsuits to determine the constitutionality of this law. Further, there remains provision under House Bill 7069, Section 41, that we do not believe have been considered. We encourage board members to use this July implementation of this bill to request that SBE grant additional time to implement a new strategy that includes a community assessment team, House Bill 7069, Section 42, to assist with the implementation of a targeted, community-oriented school model and strategic plan that has a positive track record of turning around schools similar to Evergreen within one calendar year. We thank you for the opportunity to share our concerns, and we offer our assistance and consistent commitment going forth to provide equitable education to all students in Marion County. Thank you."
Diane Schreier?
I'm Diane Schreier, 5111 Northeast 4th Street, Ocala, 34470. And I'm here to talk about a human trafficking forum that has been sponsored by AAUW and the Rotary Club of Southwest Marion on January 23rd, 6 o'clock at the Ocala Police Department. As you know, human trafficking is a huge problem in Florida. Florida is number three in the country. Orlando is fighting with Las Vegas and Miami for number one city in the country. Marion County is now number four in terms of notifications. Several groups are behind us on this forum, and I would like very much for the school board to be supportive in this and to help me get information out to the teachers and to the parents so that they can learn to recognize the symptoms, be aware of what's going on, and that people can become aware of how children are being groomed. Zach Hughes is going to be one of the speakers from the Sheriff's Department. Also, I have a woman by the name of Jan Edwards from Paving the Way will be coming to talk to everybody about how kids are being groomed through their computers and through everything else, so that they can start to become aware of what's really going on. We also have a survivor who may be coming. This will be at 6 o'clock in the community room at the Ocala Police Department on January 23rd at 6 o'clock. I said 6 o'clock already, on Pine Avenue. Any questions? I said I can do it fast. I have flyers for you, because I know you have to have a flyer.
Were they submitted prior to?
The flyers?
Yes.
No.
And we can't accept them right now, sorry.
Okay. I'll leave some over there then. Are there any questions?
Thank you.
What time was it, Diana, on the 23rd?
It's at 6 o'clock. It's important that we get the information out. Too many of our kids are being destroyed. This is a $162 million industry. Their numbers are ranging, last year was 27 million, they said. Now they're saying 20 million and 41 million. Take the pick. Depends on how you add and who you add into this. We have got to do something. There are flaws in every part of our world. It's in business, it's in the sex, it's in the labor, it's in everything. And our kids are very, very vulnerable, and if we don't get out and do something, we're in trouble. This is not going to stop. This is something that we have to fight. Kids who are at risk of domestic abuse very often become the ones who are victims. Kids who are littler or isolated, or who study more, or who love to play video games at 5:00 in the morning, like kids do sometimes, they're all at risk. Do you know several video games have chat rooms? Oh, chat rooms, great, your child's sitting at home in a chat room. Well, these little games and chat rooms, predators are on there, think they're talking to another nine-year-old, and guess what? They're not. They're talking to a predator who's making arrangements, who's becoming their best friend, who really understands them, meet them someplace. This can happen to any child. Your child, your grandchild, your great-grandchild, doesn't matter. We have got to fight this. And we have, most importantly, we have to get the, we have to get the knowledge out there so people will recognize the symptoms. If you don't know how it happens, if you don't know the symptoms, you cannot stop this. You cannot protect somebody if you don't know what's happening. There are many cases where children have literally walked out of their house just thinking of meeting a friend, and it's a pagan. And that's why I'm asking you for your support.
Thank you, and thank you for your passion. I've been to your, I've been to your forums, and the work that you do and your passion is your mission. Thank you.
I just want to add, this is very serious. I don't think the average person truly understands what a problem it is. And there's other things that we don't even necessarily look for, like sometimes in the mall parking lot, when we see the children that are carrying those buckets, trying to sell things, that is a form. They're being used. And I remember, I did not know that. So when you think you're paying $10 for candy that's in that bucket, it could be far the worse. And knowing how to look and identify, maybe even alerting our police officers, you know, that this is happening, and it just goes on. So thank you for coming.
It goes on. I was in Las Vegas a few months ago, after Vegas Strong, and I was in one of those shopping centers, and there was a girl leaning up against a wall. I started to walk by her, but I just looked, something was strange, and another woman standing near her, who didn't seem to be with her, all of a sudden hit her hand like that, because she had dared to stretch, and I see something in her movement caught my eye. Within one minute, they were gone. The perpetrators of this, of human trafficking, are not nice people. They're not your friend, but they make the kids believe it. Young kids are vulnerable. They're terribly naive in a way that we can't even imagine, because they don't have a lot of social.
Thank you for your passion. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Barbara Fleming? Please state your name and your address, please.
My name is Barbara Fleming. My address is 5574 Northwest 61st Lane, Ocala, Florida. And I am a stakeholder in Marion County, ex-assistant principal, ex-teacher, ex-dean, all of that stuff. And I own a private school now, private Christian school. And my question is, I'm very concerned about the closing of Evergreen Elementary. And I'm asking why and what has been done to help ensure that that school will not be closed? That's my question. What are the measures that have been taken to ensure? I know that Evergreen was under federal guidelines some years back, and we, everyone was moved around, and as far as the community knew, we thought it was okay. And then all of a sudden, we're hearing that we are about to be closed. And I'd like to know why and what has been done to ensure that it doesn't be closed.
And then we have a meeting also on the 16th?
We have a community meeting on the 16th.
Where?
At Evergreen. At Evergreen on January 16th. And maybe you can come and get some of your questions answered at that point. Dr. Grantham, I believe, might be in the hallway, and he can help you as well.
At what time?
The meeting is at 6:30 at Evergreen on January 16th.
I only have one other question. Will there be paperwork to let us know why this has come about, so that we can look over it also, to see what's been happening in the years since the first time the federal government had threatened to take over that school?
You will talk to Dr. Grantham. He can give you those answers.
Okay.
Okay. I'd like to step in. But just for, just because she's an educator, I feel very strongly that she should have some time with Dr. Grantham. And I would like, if Dr. Grantham is here, for him to introduce himself to her.
Okay.
And so, so they could, at some point, make a connection so she can get that information that she's looking for.
Thank you, Mr. James.
Go.
He's out in the hall. He's at, he's out in the hall.
And he shouldn't meet you out there. If not, come back in.
I sure will.
Okay.
Marbella Haynes?
She's, I know she's out there, because I saw her.
I'm Marbella Haynes. I live at 2916 Northwest 3rd Terrace, Ocala, Florida. As a taxpayer, mother, grandmother, and twin, of twin sons at Evergreen Elementary, and also serve as their psych president, I'm disappointed, and I'm concerned and disappointed about the decision that's supposed to have been made about what's going to happen at Evergreen. When I heard what had been discussed, it seemed like it's already been decided, I became furious, because it says you have written off our children before they have been given the opportunity, because as parents, we had the understanding that the grades would not go in until after the test was taken in April. And then to hear what's going on now, my philosophy in life, it takes a village to raise a child. That's the home, the school, and the community. And I feel like if we pull together and work together, we can make a difference and can see a difference, what's going on. And of all the things I've heard, I have not heard anything that what has really been done to correct the problems. As you know, Evergreen started off with at least eight substitute teachers the first of the year. It was about 10 weeks into the school year when they switched the second-grade teachers to the fourth grade. A lot of those students had substitute teachers. If the kids are already struggling, what can a substitute teacher do to help them to bridge the gap, to come up to where they need to come up to? So to me, that's a problem. Knowing this is why, and I would like to know, what measures did the district take then to try to rectify this problem? And not only that, the homework, no homework, we as parents, we feel dis- We, as parents, we feel disconnected from the school. Because when they were bringing homework home, we could look at it and say, we might, because a lot of parents don't understand the curriculum, the way it's set up today, and the standards that you are taught. A lot of us don't. But that don't mean we're dumb, stupid, and crazy either. It's just the way they're being taught. Two times two is four. I don't care what, how you come with it. But this long, you know, coming up with it, and when you sit down and try to help your kids, they say, oh, no, no. That's not the way they're teaching us. Uh-uh, that's not the way to do it. We helpless. We are helpless, and the kids are helpless. And not only that, and as the parents and the stakeholders, I was really upset also because when we heard about it, it was Thursday morning, and it was like, it was a done deal. And that was very confusing, that the Starbinder had it out there, Evergreen is being closed, and at a time before the kids take the test, what does that do to the morale? If you're telling me I'm writing you off here, why should I perform and try to move further? You know, and my heart really goes out to the teachers and the students because they're the ones that's going to suffer the most. Also, and I'd like to know, what have you all really done as far as maybe changing? I know you can't change the curriculum, but when the teachers say, well, we have to teach by the curriculum. A lot of times, you teach the curriculum, but if Johnny or Sally does not know the curriculum, somebody has to be in there to bridge that gap. And it's not happening. And so that's why they're steadily failing. Because some of the kids, there's missing pieces that they don't have to be able to comprehend the curriculum they are doing. And with that, you know, and I also say about the busing, when I saw where the kids were going to be sent, Airport Road to Reddick, that's a long ride. These kids have to get up early in the morning, as it is now. That's a long ride. And then I look at, there's Saddlewood, there is College Park. Have those things been considered? And I guess it's a lot of missing pieces we, as parents and the community, don't know, that we need to be filled in on. And if we knew, then maybe, you know, we wouldn't have the being hurt and disappointed in what's going on. So, and I'm just going to ask, and this morning, according to Channel 9 News, they said that the state decided to do it earlier. Well, if that's the case, maybe let's see what we can do to take the burden off you all and go to the state. Because these are our children, and we're setting up a group of kids for failure. And in closing, I ask, please, if anything that we can do differently, please, let's try to do it to save our kids and save Evergreen, at least for another year, can they can take that test and see, can they pass it? And one thing, like I said, I made a story, let's see, can we do a Saturday to school? Put in some extra time on that Saturday, just work on the basic skills that these kids don't have. Let's forget about the curriculum on a special day, and let's see, can we work on the basic skills they need? That's really all I say. Please help us to save our children and save Evergreen.
Ms. Haines?
Yes, ma'am.
You are so well-respected in the community. And on January the 16th, at 6:30 PM at Evergreen, there is a community meeting where these questions, you can ask these questions, and they will go over all of the steps that have taken up to this point. We would love for you to get the message out that we're having this community meeting and to get as many parents there as you possibly can.
Ms. Beth, you know, we go back a long ways, and I tell you, I'm going to take on that challenge.
And I know, and I know you will meet it.
Thank you all so much.
Okay, let me get into here just a little bit. You are President of the SAC Committee.
Yes.
Have anybody came and just sat with the SAC Committee?
No.
Madam Superintendent, prior to the meeting that they have with the group, can someone go sit with that SAC Committee and go over the data and share with them what information that we have? Because I know we're going, you're having a group meeting out there, and nothing like a good crowd. But I want this information to be disseminated to the people that have been working there. And I think we owe everybody an opportunity to get involved with that. And then they'll have some additional questions at the meeting, at the community meeting. If we could get somebody to meet with that SAC Committee, because they've been meeting. So why not send someone over there and let them sit down and go over these things? Can we do that?
So I have talked with the SAC, and we talked, and all that, and you went into.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Ms. Haines.
And we appreciate what you all do, and we're not here to beat you up, we just want to save our children.
We understand, so do we. That's it?
May I have a motion to adopt revised Board Policy 5.15, homeless students? Moved by Ms. Boynton, seconded by Mr. James.
This board policy has been revised and updated to reflect the McKinney-Vento Act and to replace certain provisions of the Expired No Child Left Behind Act of 2001.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the revised board policy? If not, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion passed, five zero. May I have a motion to adopt revised Board Policy 6.181, probationary status for non-instructional personnel? Moved by Ms. King, seconded by Ms. Boynton.
The board policy has been revised to update the probationary period for unrepresented employees to be consistent with probationary requirements for employees in the IUPAT and MEA bargaining units.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the revised board policy? Do we have her name?
No.
Mr. Gibbs, we don't have a form.
Did you fill out a public speaker form?
No, I did not. She said it was open, so that's why I asked.
First off, you said MEA, and it's M E S P?
That's the presentation later on the contract.
We have a presentation later on the contract.
Okay. Our contract is M E S P. Paris, non-instruct is M E S P. It's I-PAC and M E S P.
I believe that's later.
It's a different.
It's a different one? Okay, it's only for I-PAC?
This is a revised board policy.
This is a policy.
It's a policy.
The district policy is for I-PAC only, then?
Dr. Hamm, can you clarify?
Yeah, please.
If I may clarify, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent. Currently, the MEA contract and the IUPAT contract have one-year probationary periods. Our administrators are at-will employees who are on basically what amounts to an annual contract. This board policy would standardize the one-year probationary period for the unrepresented people, our district specialized staff, those who are not a part of a collective bargaining unit, to give them equity in terms of the period of time at which they can learn their new job. And it's advantageous both for the administration and for the employee because if it's on a 90-day plan, the individual may not have learned the new job, and the administrator is forced to make a decision, do we want to continue that job or let them go? So this gives them a one-year probationary period.
Okay.
She's addressing the M E S P contract, which is separate from this because the M E S P contract has a shorter probationary period specified in it. For that to change, it would have to be done at the collective bargaining table.
That's why I was bringing something up.
Okay, okay. Anybody else? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion passed, five zero. May I have a motion to adopt revised Board Policy 7.35, investment of funds?
Second.
Ms. Boynton moved, seconded by Mr. James.
This board policy has been revised to address current market conditions and practices. Clean up wording, update statutory authority laws implemented, and state Board of Education rule.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address this revised board policy? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion passed, five zero. May I have a motion to approve the Exceptional Student Education 2017-2018 Special Programs and Procedures? Moved by Mrs. King. Seconded by Mrs. Boynton. Madam Superintendent?
Florida statutes require the district school board submit to the Department of Education proposed procedures for the provision of special instruction and services for exceptional students once every three years.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address the Updated ESE 2017-2018 Special Programs and Procedures? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Motion passed, five zero. May I have a motion to receive public input prior to board approval of the 2017-2018 textbook titles for adoption at a public hearing scheduled for February 13th, 2018? Moved by Ms. Boynton, seconded by Mrs. King.
This public hearing assures compliance with Board Policy 4.21 by providing an open, noticed, public hearing to receive comments on recommended materials prior to adoption. The vote on the adoption of the 2017-2018 textbook titles will be during a public hearing at the February 13th, 2018 School Board Meeting.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to provide input on the 2017-2018 textbook titles for adoption? Ms. Julie King?
Laura Jean Lindsay. My name is Laura Lindsay, last name L-I-N-D-S-E-Y. I'm at 5555 West Anthony Road, Ocala, Florida. First, I want to thank everyone. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I am asking you to reject the textbook that is up for adoption for the eighth-grade physical science. It is the Houghton-Mifflin-Harcourt Florida Science Book. Full disclosure, I was on the adoption committee, the textbook review committee. I was one of the teachers that was able to review the book and meet. I was concerned that there weren't a lot of teachers that were involved in the process. So I'm concerned that there weren't a lot of teachers in the process. With that being said, when I started reviewing the book, I was first thrilled that it was a consumable book. I love the fact that it's a consumable book. As a KPD-trained teacher, how can I possibly teach the strategies such as text coding, magnet summaries, highlighting, underlining, when you can't write in the book? So that, I started off with a very positive feeling about the book. But as I got into it, first, some of the visuals were distracting to the student. I feel that the visuals were distracting to the students. Some of them were not age-appropriate, like they had a picture of a toy robot, and this is an eighth-grade student that is to be reading the book. So I felt that it needed to be more in line with what we were learning about in the curriculum for chemistry and for physics, for that particular example. In addition to that, our standards are very, very deep. We have a lot of standards in science, and they go very, very deep. The book, however, just skims the surface. One of the reviewers described it as having sound bites. She actually liked the sound bites. And I'm all for sound bites because that grabs your attention. And that's what we want to do, we want to engage the students. But when you see a sound bite on TV, or you read a sound bite in the newspaper, the headline, it grabs your attention, and then you read further into it, and you watch the news report, and you're getting the details. Unfortunately, our book that is up for adoption is just sound bites. It doesn't go into the details necessary for our regular students and especially for our advanced students. For our lower readers, for our lower kids, that is an easier book to work with, an easier book to digest, and I see that. But for the regular ed kids and the advanced, and I teach the full realm, the full spectrum, that it's not reaching them. They need more of the details. A lot of my kids ask me questions, how and why. The current book we're using now answers the how and whys. This book that we're looking at now is not answering the hows and the whys. There are several standards that it does not reach, or does not reach completely. If you read the standard, it looks like it does, you'll find the word in the book, but it might just define it, and that's it. It doesn't give the details, it doesn't elaborate, it doesn't connect it to their daily lives. It doesn't make it relevant to them. Some of the standards, look as you read the standard, it looks as you read the passage in the book, like it meets it, until I go into the item specifications presented by the Department of Education. As a teacher, I look at that, and I look at their content limits. And that tells me what items on the state assessment my students may be assessed at. Items may assess the terms saturation, solvent, solute, when we're dealing with solubility. Items will not assess calculations of acceleration. So I know what rigor I'm supposed to be teaching at. The publishers, I don't know, have access to that. So they didn't see what the item specs are saying. But when I went to the item specs, there's a lot of the standards that where it says things will be assessed, they're not in the book. They're not mentioned, solubility. It doesn't mention solute, saturation, solvent. It just talks about solutions as different kinds of mixtures. That's not enough. Now, some people say that we should supplement it. Teachers can supplement it. And we do, we supplement to enhance the instruction, to reinforce, to review, to engage. But we shouldn't have to supplement to make up for what's lacking in the book. When we start supplementing, then we start worrying about copyright laws as well. So that's one of the concerns. One of the last things that I wanted to say in that is that in the past, we have been given the opportunity to review textbooks, and we're normally given two to four textbooks. And we're told, we have to adopt one of these. This time, with our new process, we were told, however many textbooks we had to review, that you could reject them. Even if you only had one book, you could reject that one book. I only had one book to review for this course. And I'm asking you, please, to reject it. For the teacher's sake, because I feel lots of teachers are going to feel it's not sufficient for them. And if we have an absent student, how do we get them caught up? If we can't just say, here's the book, make sure you read these pages, read the chapter, because it's not in there? How do I give them the enhancements, the supplements that I have been able to scrounge up? Thank you so much for your time, if you have any questions.
Dr. Mayer? Can I just clarify? So you were on the voting committee, correct?
Yes, ma'am, I was.
And were you the one, no vote?
I got the strong impression that I was the one.
Okay, no, that's fine. We had four yes votes and one no vote. Mr. McAtier, is that correct? Okay, but I want to thank you for your investment and your detailed feedback. And remember that as we move forward, it is a recommendation to the board, and for you to put the time in to review this textbook is huge. I share your concern about the lack of teachers wanting to participate. And we placed as many, as, the science especially, was difficult. So I just wanted to share that, that there was, she's correct, there was only one textbook that made the selection process, five people on the committee, and it was a four to one vote.
Were you the only teacher on the committee?
I believe there was one other, there was another science teacher. She teaches at Kingsbury, I believe. So she liked it because it was a book that her kids, she felt, could go through and understand quite well. I had another person that taught elementary, but I think she was there as a community. I had another person that taught elementary, but I think she was there as a community, and she was supposed to be viewing it as a community member. So, I think there were only two teachers viewing it through teacher eyes.
And you teach advanced?
I teach the regular science kids, which I also have support facilitative kids in my classes, as well as advanced classes.
Okay, is there any way we can review that particular thing again, and look at what she's saying? Because I'm hearing some valid things here.
I do have this written up, but I didn't know about the 24-hour notice on a handout. I could provide you what I had typed up, and it specifies some of the examples and the standards that I found lacking.
The textbook link has been online, so you can get on there and look at it. And would you, can she email the Board, Mr. Gibbs?
Email myself or the Superintendent's office, and we'll make sure your comments are made available.
Okay, I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, and seriously, thank you for taking the time that you put into reviewing that. That was a huge task. It's appreciated.
And thanks.
Appreciate the opportunity.
Thanks for coming tonight, as well.
I want to, can I add something also? Is there any way that we can, I know we don't want to develop another committee, but I think it would be helpful, or I not think, I know, these teachers are in the classroom, they seen their note. Is there another way we could somehow get more teachers to look at these books before it's approved? I'm very hesitant and nervous when we have one book and one middle school teacher, and then probably the others are elementary.
It's been online.
Right. But, are we, I'm not sure everyone is, I know it's online, but is everyone aware, you know, that they can, they have a vested interest in this and can do this?
We have communicated an open invitation to both community members and teachers included since September, since this process kicked off. So, that information has been out there.
Is it just online?
No, ma'am. We have shared it with media outlets. It's been on the radio, it's been in print, it's been on television multiple times from multiple stations. So, it has actually kind of surprised me in how much coverage it's gotten. So, the word is out there. Whether people, including teachers, choose to take advantage of it, that's something that's beyond our control. But, I do think we put the information out there months and months ago, back in September.
Right. I know it's been out there. Have the principals, I wonder, like, when they had their meetings, I wonder if they can, because sometimes teachers are busy, and they may not have time to watch TV or to say anything. And also, one more thing is those numbers, the books and the numbers on the votes. Is there any way you can share those with the Board? Because I know we've been questioned, and I've sent an email, but I haven't received any information on the books and the numbers. So, if you can just get that information to us.
We put a packet together in every Board member's box. We hand-delivered them to Ms. Julie, and it was the tally of the vote exactly by yes, no, and absent, in case she don't recall seeing it. And we turned it in to the receptionist. It was five packets. We dropped it in directly to put in through the Board's boxes.
When did you put it in?
The day it was requested.
I remember seeing some paperwork.
It was all in a manila folder, and it was everything to each Board member.
I don't think I really digested it, because we weren't really talking.
We can get you another copy.
We can hand-deliver another copy. It was right after the work session, you had, I think, it was one of them, Ms. King or Ms. Stacy had asked at the work session, and Crystal went back and put those packets together, and so the next day, we brought them over.
So, tomorrow, we'll get that for them. Thank you.
I got mine.
Might I also add one thing? Mrs. King, just as a reminder, you may not know this, some of you may not know this. Anytime, my office shares information with the media, which in this case, we've been talking on a regular basis about this topic, that information actually goes out district-wide first, in the form of an email. So, anybody who has an email account gets that same exact information, word for word, that the media get. But, again, we don't control whether they open that email and actually read the email. Well, a lot of us, myself included, read the topic line and move on if we need to. But, we do share that information, but it's a constant challenge to get the intended audiences. If I could figure that out, I'd have a lot of condos on the beach somewhere, and I wouldn't be with you tonight. But, if we could, you know, share that information, just word, mouth to mouth, you know, that's the best way to share that information.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Christian. I believe we have some others. Joanne Houghton?
I found my piece of paper. Hi, I'm Joanne Houghton. I reside at 711 Northeast 45th Street in Ocala, Florida. My last name is spelled H.O.U.G.H.T.O.N. This is my fourth year teaching middle school civics, all here in Marion County. I love this subject. It's probably, to me, the best subject ever. I love the Constitution. It's probably one of the greatest documents ever written. And when we received the email about textbook adoption committee, I applied. I'm like, yes, let's get a better textbook for our students, because the textbook we have right now is not the best. And I can give you a lot of specific examples with benchmarks that make it so this textbook is not the best. I wasn't selected. And then I saw on the Mayor Moments Twitter page, on October 6, 2017, pictures of textbooks that were, that I thought would have been up for adoption, because it was talking about the adoption committee. Those textbooks were We the People. It was actually posted, the red version, which is the past edition. This is the most updated edition. And Gateway. Two great books that I use in my classroom every day. I was very, very excited, because I'm like, these are great books, awesome, we're finally going to have something that's going to be great for our kids. So, I wasn't worried. I then went to the community event at MTI to review the textbooks, and I saw the Civics and Practice Book, which is the book that I currently have. For example, Benchmark 1.9, which goes over the rule of law, which means nobody is above the law, it just states the benchmark in a caption on the page about the preamble. That's it. For Benchmark 2.8, which goes over the ideals of the major political parties, it just says what is a two-party system and a three-party, and what is a third party. It doesn't go into the value, sorry, the views of the major political parties. For the levels of courts, it's incorrect on the state level. It says for the state level that there is just trial, appeal, and supreme, where in the state, we have county courts, which handle misdemeanors, circuit courts, which handle felonies, appeals courts, and a Supreme Court. So, it's missing an entire level of courts in the state of Florida. I then learned yesterday that that book was rejected from Ms. Barber. I was so excited. Last year, I researched a bunch of different professional development opportunities, and while I was attending the Justice Teaching Institute in Tallahassee, I heard from several other teachers across the state about We the People. And I found out over this, doing, again, more research for professional development, that the Florida Law Related Education Association was doing the James Madison Legacy Project, and at that day, went over the We the People textbook. I got a classroom set from going through that, and I had been using that textbook in my classroom with my students every single day. It go, every lesson, the title of the lesson is a question. Every section in the lesson is a question. Every caption is a question, though the students can use the text to answer these questions. I am in the process of trying to create a Constitution hearing for my kids to participate in after we take our end-of-course exam, to review for our end-of-course exam. For example, lesson 11 goes over the Articles of Confederation. That gave my students a concrete understanding of the Articles of Confederation. It goes over Cheyenne's Rebellion, our first national government, and what led to our Constitution. Lesson seven goes over the colonist's experience with British rule, which has now led into, me going into the Bill of Rights, which I'm going into right now with my students. It has several lessons, three or four lessons, on the Bill of Rights, and how the Constitution safeguards our rights, and it ties them to Supreme Court cases, which gives our students a real-life learning opportunity that shows law and our Constitution is a living, breathing, constantly-changing document. And I am asking that we get a text for our students that shows them this. And I currently spend three to four nights a week till 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night. So, I go to school, teach all day, come home, get on my computer, and I'm spending till 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night, searching the Internet to help give my kids information to teach them. And I shouldn't have to do that. I love it, because I love the subject, because it's very entertaining to me, but I'm giving up time with my family and community, and doing things like that, to search for reading for my kids that can give them what they need. And I hope that we can find a text for civics that will give them to them, because our students are a number-one priority, also one that doesn't rely on technology. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Mayer? Great points. And first of all, thank you. Thank you for your dedication to our kids. Thank you for your in-depth knowledge on history and civics, and thank you for bringing up this point. When, and you remember from the work session, nobody on the committee liked the proposed textbooks, and we went through all the details on why they made it through the cut and all that stuff. The We the People, there is, and Mr. McAtter is nodding, and I'll ask him to speak in just a minute. There is a huge, and I will use the term, fan base.
Ground spell.
That's much more professional. I say fan base, for this textbook. Ms. Barber has been in direct communication with this company. There is an issue with them having electronic version. We are working with them. Mr. McAtter, could you come up? Don't leave, Ms. Houghton. Could you come up and address that?
Well, somewhere at home tonight, Buddy Oswald is smiling, so I will start by saying that first. So, if you remember the work session, we talked a lot about We the People, and it's one of the things, we talked also about the parallel process where we're starting over for some of these textbooks that the community did not want the students to have, which is one of the, the civics book is definitely one of those. And one of the things that, the month of January, our program specialist in social studies, Ms. Barber and also Ms. Renfro are working with the different publishers, they've called several different publishers to try to get different resources in their hands. Civics is a little tricky, just because, as Dr. Mayer alluded to, some of the technology and some of the things that we require, we are working to try to, and I don't want to favor one publisher over another, but as Dr. Mayer alluded to, there is a huge fan base in Marion County for We the People. So, at the high school and at the middle school level, it is something that will definitely be considered strongly. So, I appreciate Joanne coming and talking about that, and I know, like I said, you know, somewhere at home, Mr. Oswald is smiling, because of all the great work he's done with We the People over the years.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something. Thanks.
Can I say something about technology? Will it be like the, like, are y'all looking for something like the math textbook that's highly technology-reliant, or are we all looking for something that's not as highly technology-reliant? I just know that my students, half of my students, don't have technology or access to Internet at home, and don't have the transportation to a library to get that.
In-state statute, it requires a certain amount of technology, even when we do our own process. There are certain things that have to be technology embedded, and so, again, we're working with that company to go the spirit of the law and help them help us. So, Ms. Barber is in almost daily contact with them.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we weren't fully relying on, and we had a hardcover book for kids who don't have Internet access.
We're just trying to meet the minimum statute requirement, so we can get that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to say something to Ms. McColl, please, it's a public hearing. Okay, quickly. I would like to know which high school you're at.
I'm not at a high school.
I'm at Fort McCoy School.
You know what? I am so impressed. I absolutely had to have the chair notice me while you were walking to your seat, because you must know how much support you have up here for coming and talking to us tonight, when you are so busy and you are so right. We should give the teachers their curriculum, and they should not have to put Band-Aids and stick holes in the dams all over it. We should, that is our job as a school board member, to give you the curriculum that you need and to approve a curriculum that works. And if the students don't do well, and it's because the curriculum is our fault, because we approved the wrong curriculum, and I want to thank you, because the teachers should not have to keep putting supplements together. This is crazy. The teachers should not have to do this school board's job. We are hired by this community to choose a curriculum, and you are to implement it. Thank you, Ms. Stacy. Thank you. Ms. Julie?
Kirsten Angel.
Good evening, Dr. Meyer and members of the Board. My name is Kirsten Angel. My last name is spelled A-N-G-E-L. I live at 9317 Beaheer Road, Ocala, Florida, 34472. I, first of all, want to congratulate and thank you all, Dr. Mayer, her staff, and the Board members. I, too, served as a community member on the textbook adoption committee. I was on the group that did the civics book that the lady just recommended, and the reason I want to thank and congratulate you is you all stepped out of the box. You all did something that the rest of the state of Florida was not doing, and I guess laughed at you and scoffed at you when you suggested that you wanted to do this. And I know that your staff worked diligently on coming up with this process. I know from what I observed in serving in the process, I thoroughly enjoyed it. I and everyone spent a lot of time, you know, we took your, Dr. Meyer's mandate of, you know, how important this was, very seriously. And I would do it again. I would make some suggestions on how I would improve the process. And I know specifically that I, since I served on that committee that reviewed that sixth grade, or seventh grade, I guess, civics book that Ms., the former teacher, Ms. Houghton, was just speaking about, I can say that we unanimously hated it, hated it. As a community member, I would not spend one dime on it, and I would be upset if you, as the Board, did so, and it sounds like, hopefully, that's unanimously a decision that you're, and we were concerned, and this would be a recommendation I would make going forward, in terms of how you would tweak the process if you could, that we only had one book to choose from. And we all were pretty unanimous in that we did not think it was a good book, for a whole lot of reasons. And I know I particularly wrote, like, about a two-page response at the little workshop of why I personally did not like it, and my opinions were not unique to some, you know, from some of the other committee members. So, I hope that you all are taking, you know, those comments seriously. I know that my particular committee even said that we would meet again if need be to help you all choose another book. And I strongly hope and think that you will maybe do this again going forward. I think it was a great process, and I do think you should, you know, try to get some suggestions from people who went through it, you know, to how you can tweak it moving forward. But, again, and I know I contacted three Board members to, when I learned about this process through the media, through, you know, Mr. Christian's efforts last fall, and I enjoy the process very much, and so, I look forward to doing it again, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Angel, very much.
Do you want Mr. McAtter to update on moving forward with the books?
Mr. McAtter, would you like to update on where we are on moving forward?
Sure. We, same, the timeline hasn't changed since the work session, so hopefully, we have that information for you. If not, I can get that out to you. But, January is the time, actually, for this process, for the books that were recommended by the committees, and Dr. Mayer had the final recommendation over all textbooks, as it says in this Board policy, those books were recommended to you. Tonight is public hearing, and then we move into the vote in February, February 13, I believe. And then we have a timeframe after that. I don't have it with me, but I have a timeframe where anybody can object to the Board's decisions. And then in March, I believe it's right after spring break, meeting after spring break, they can come in, and actually, we go through a hearing officer, as we kind of discussed at the Board work session, where a hearing officer comes in, and all they do is mediate the actual information, the objection, because the Board would be voting on it, therefore, they wouldn't want anyone from the Board, by state statute, to be able to have to mediate the actuals. Basically, you'll hand the gavel to that hearing officer. The Board will discuss and listen to the objections, and the folks will come and speak, if that's the road that they go. For the folks that, for the books that the committee said, absolutely not, we don't want those books, we're starting over, as we spoke about. We're using the same committees to make sure that the process keeps the same integrity, so that the same people are on the committees, as Ms. Angel and other folks have spoken, that were on the committees, so that the books were rejected, they can come back, and our program specialists are looking in all the areas to see who met our technical requirements, as well as, remember, we had the work session back in September, October, the requirements for student privacy, for third party, which let out some of our bigger publishers. I will tell you, just as an aside, that many of our large publishers, who we told no when they saw Ms. Sizmar at a convention or a conference for their instructional materials, they did not take Marion County Public Schools seriously, and they did not take this policy seriously, that we would stick to what we said. So, as we move forward, we're going to do the same process in the spring, hopefully move it along so that we can get textbooks in the hands of students by September, that are in August, September, that's our goal, have the teachers trained in July, August, and make sure that we take care of the teachers, so that they have the tools to be successful. But, the biggest thing, going back to the original reason why this policy was adopted by you, the Board, with Dr. Mayer, Dr. Grantham, and Dr. Hamm's leadership in the spring, was to not rubber-stamp books anymore, to not say, you have three books, and you have to choose one of these three books, and we're not leaving. and you have to choose one of these three books, and we're not leaving this room until you choose one of these three books. So I think there are certainly some things we can tweak. I think the biggest and the strongest point that we take from this is, as we're working through the wrinkles, is that we did listen. And we are not, you know, we're not looking at the content of the books. Our program specialists looked at them after the folks looked at them. But it's not something where the district is saying, you have to choose this book. We're listening to our teachers, and we're listening to the community. So I just want to kind of reiterate that and make sure that we understand that. So I will certainly have Crystal include with the new packets a copy of the slide with the timeline in it for both processes. So thank you.
We have a motion on the floor. Did we vote on that? The motion was to have input, to have the public hearing for public comments. So we do need to vote, since we have a motion on the floor that we had public comments, correct? So the motion was to have the public comments, and we should have voted prior. Okay, sorry, sorry. Okay. So if, all those in favor of the public comments that we just heard, please say yay. All those opposed, like sign. Sorry, I'm very sorry. Okay, motion passed five to zero. We have a motion to approve consent agenda, consent agenda items, C 11 dot one dash C 19 point one as submitted. Moved by Ms. Boynton.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. King. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion passed five to zero. May I have a motion to approve the 2017-2018 collective bargaining agreement between the School Board of Marion County SBMC and the Marion Education Association, MEA? May I have a motion?
Send it.
Moved by Mrs. King.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Boynton. Dr. Meyer, you wish to provide additional information prior to the discussion and vote by the board?
Yes, we are pleased to have Dr. Grantham lead the discussion and lead a presentation tonight on the process and how we bargain and the partnerships that we have with our stakeholders.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent, Ms. Gies, Ms. Chulley. Ms. McCall asked us, when we were reviewing the agenda, to kind of walk through this, to explain to the, to someone that might be at home, that what negotiations look like. So we did a very simplistic, step-by-step, this is how we negotiate, this is what we do, and as a result, this is what happened. Before we do this, everybody thinks negotiation is just strictly about the money. That's a huge part, but it's not only about the money. We talk about language, we talk about the way of work, we talk about what's best for the school environment. So we will get to the money, but we're not starting with the money. The district has a side of folks, MEA has a side. We kind of started off and just had conversations the first meeting, but these are the people that represented both sides of the district. Without hesitation, the people on the district side, we have to have Ms. Boston Ellis there, because she tells us yay or nay, we can, we cannot do that. And Dr. Hamm was there. He was the facilitator. He was the one that said, no, that's not what we said, this is what we said. And he would write the events down as we go. These are dates we met. If you're not familiar with negotiations, sometimes they're very lengthy, sometimes they, there are multiple meetings. There are several districts in our state that are in impasse right now because they haven't met any kind of resolution or agreement. But if you look at that, we met five times, and we got some work done. I think the last meeting was the longest one. It was probably, what, four hours, maybe? Dr. Hamm wanted to have every meeting be four hours, and Chris and Mark and I said, we'll shoot for two. So they were very short. This is what, some of the outcomes, and we'll go through some of the outcome measures that we had. You remember the conversation we had about health insurance, and we had to make sure that we put that in, because that is a big expense that the board decided this is what we wanted to do. So we put that in, and there's some actual dollar figures at the bottom. It's roughly $606, $607 per employee for 5,500 employees. Here's more, and I'll define some of these acronyms as we go. Each instructional unit, each teacher, each, if you follow the instructional bargaining unit, you receive a $700 market adjustment. The COLA, that is not a soft drink, that is a cost of living adjustment, is $100. These are good jokes for this time of night, so y'all just do whatever you need to do. We'll receive $100. So you'll see that a teacher will get $700 plus the $100 for the COLA. If we go beyond, the effective teacher gets an additional $250. So if I'm an effective teacher, I've got the $700, the $100, and the $250. A highly effective teacher does not get the highly, the effective dollars, you get an additional $500. If you're a needs improvement teacher, you simply got the $700 market adjustment and the $100 COLA. I want to stop and describe how the money situation works. And we've had this analogy, and we've talked about this. When we do a, you're going to give raises, you're going to do this, you're going to pay for insurance. Ms. Boston Ellis sets aside every year a percentage of money that we have and we negotiate. We were very forthright. The analogy I would use is, if you're building a house, if you want to put crown in your house, you might not be able to get wood floors. So we went back and forth and said, this is the pot of money. And Ms. Boston Ellis is very serious about not going over that threshold, which is good. So we kept going back and forth, and we had conversations. And MEA was great. They went through and they would caucus and say, yeah, we want to do this, or no, we don't want to do that. We increased some things, and union came, and we brought some concerns too, about some of the supplements. We didn't want people to think that sports and athletic supplements were more important than academic supplements, because they're simply not. They're a piece of what we do and a large vital part of what we do in our community. Academic supplements are just as important. So we increased that from $350 to $1,002, mirror, to get more closely aligned to some of the athletic supplements. The ESE supplements, there's a large demand, a large need for ESE teachers. That is a very tough sell in this climate that we have just as a collective state. We actually doubled that from $250 to $500. We changed the hourly stipend to $25. And if you see the bottom bullet, the ESE specialist that we put at the schools to help with the IP's for the teachers, we're having a hard time keeping them and also attracting people to do that position. So we bumped it up from $2090 to $2,500. Comp time. We didn't have comp time. And we brought this to the union and said, we need to do this, because I would say that great principals are doing this already. So if we ask you to go to open house tonight, therefore, we have to provide some kind of incentive. We can't give you money for it, but we can give you something. If you need to run to the doctor's appointment, it doesn't cost us a sub, we'll do it. So it's kind of a swap. So we put some pretty clear language in that. There can never be any money going out, but there should be some compensated time. And to be honest with you, people were doing that in their own little individual ways already. We just wanted to kind of formalize that and make sure it was right. We changed the definition. Now we're getting a little technical, and I'm not going to read these to you, for probationary. We want to make sure we do what's best for teachers. And we had multiple conversations about this, what the, and Dr. Hamm is very good at probationary and technical terms and that kind of stuff. So this was what we agreed to for a probationary year teacher. Again, more technicality, I will say. And some of these are, we just added into, I'm not going to talk about that. You see the comp time again. And we wanted to really take care of our teachers and make sure we put in there some language that said, if there's a voting night, we can't have a faculty meeting, we can't do that. So we want to incentivize and say, hey, we're encouraging you to vote, we're not going to do anything on those days. And I think, again, schools, some schools are doing that, not all schools are doing that. We want to make sure that we put that in some kind of contract. This is, we have a very, I'm going to say beyond amicable relationship, where if you want to bring up a topic, you can. We didn't, the reopeners, and when you say, we want to open up negotiations, again, we talk, we meet every other Friday and have conversations. Chris and Mark are very good about saying, hey, this is going on. We try to address it right away. Again, just more technical. This is Mr. Gies kind of language stuff here. He loves reading this. This is changing acronyms and terms and eliminating things and giving it more specificity. The PDS is called a CAS, another acronym in education, Content Area Specialists. We did the Resource Clients, and then we did ESE Specialist, and you know about those. Those are the individual folks at the schools. We got rid of the ISP, because there was no real job description that fit that. It was just so generic, we couldn't really hire people, because they didn't know what they were getting into. They would get in the job, and then it wasn't necessarily what they thought they were doing. So we eliminated that. This last piece was for the Student Service Manager. That was a conversation we had back and forth of the bargaining unit. Prior to this agreement, a Student Service Manager could be moved at any time with, just without anything, just because the principal wanted to bring their own person. We eliminated that. And to move someone from Student Service Manager out of that position, they have to follow the process too. So there has to be a step to. And again, it's more technical language, but we felt like there should be some kind of reason why the dean or the Student Service Manager moved from the school. Thank you. Saw Jody with all his toys a few minutes ago for the lacrosse. We had to add, you have to pay the lacrosse coaches. We changed some of the freshman head coach supplements. We changed the titles. Again, it's just a title change, not a money change, from assistant coach to varsity coach. We increased the high school organization supplements from $650 to $100, and we, or to $1,000, I'm sorry. And then we changed the business manager and added assistant athletic. So again, it's titles, and a lot of this is brought to us by principals and Mr. Phillips as well. That is all before MESP. So you want to talk MEA, or would you like to?
Well, I think we need to vote on this one first before we go into the next one. All right, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the collective bargaining agreement for 2017-2018. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. I can't see it. Did it pass?
Oh, it did, yes.
The motion passed five to zero. May I have a motion to approve the 2017-2018 collective bargaining agreement between the School Board of Marion County and the Marion Essential Support Personnel?
Send it.
Moved by Mrs. King, seconded by Mrs. Boynton. Dr. Meyer, you wish to provide additional information prior to discussion?
And we will share that information with you.
Good evening again, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Superintendent. Just as Dr. Grantham is the chief negotiator for MEA, I am for MESP. And it has been a really wonderful experience, and this year especially, because we had a more collaborative atmosphere for our negotiations. The teams are there for you to see and for your records in case you care to have that for the future. You've got that in your handout. Those are the MESP representatives, and then also on the district side. We met for one, two, three, four, five, so we had five meeting dates as well. Some of them were four hours long, some were two. It just depended on what we needed. Sometimes they went over the four-hour mark. But it was, it was a great experience. And it's interesting to note that this year was a full-book year. And what that means for negotiations is that we had, we were able to look at every single section of the contract and discuss it and make changes to it. Whereas in other years, it is only a single year that you negotiate. So this was a full-book year, and we did it in pretty good time, I say. All right. Outcome for the wages and the supplements, that's what we're going to talk about a little bit right now. The health insurance slide here is the same that Dr. Grantham shared with you, because of course, that is for both of our MEA groups and our MESP group of people. So this equates to a $606 employee addition due to that free healthcare plan. You, the district absorbed that cost. For 1718, for the wage increase, you see at the top there, we increased all steps on the wage schedule by 35 cents. So across the board, there was a 35 cent increase for everyone in this group of people. We also approved a step advancement for anyone who was eligible for a step. So if it was their time, and they'd been on a step for two years or three years, and they were eligible for that next increase, that was definitely approved. We did a couple of supplements that were requested. Special needs para-professionals, they have a difficult job. Many times, they're dealing with very sensitive things in the classroom. And it was requested that they have an extra supplement for that. We agreed at the cost of $25 per year. And then bilingual receptionists, they are wonderful. And it is a very important thing to have. And we feel that if you are bilingual, we thought that the supplement was well-deserved. All of these pay actions, the supplements, the increase to the wage is retroactive to July 1, 17. We started out our very first negotiation session with a TA, meaning we tentatively agreed on language immediately. And that is because we could easily agree to add an additional whereas statement to the introduction of the contract. And you can see why, we both agreed immediately, MESP side and the district. This language states that our essential support professionals play a vital role in the education of our children and the daily operation of our district. And that is most definitely the case. It's a wonderful way to open up the collaborative bargaining agreement. We also, of course, had other language changes, which now we'll go through. I won't go through all of it in too in-depth. You, there's questions, of course, I will certainly answer if you have them. In 310, copies of the agreement, we all agreed that MESP would provide a copy of the contract at every location for our members so that they could easily access it. We also increased the number of hours that the association can give to employees from 100 to 155 to engage in association business. That means that they have an increase of 55 hours to attend conferences, trainings, delegation, assemblies, that sort of thing. This section discusses a new employee orientation. In our discussions, in our negotiations, it became apparent that our essential support personnel, professionals can definitely benefit from a new employee orientation. We've done it for years for our teachers, and we would like to combine our new teacher orientation, if we can possibly, with a new employee orientation for our essential support professionals. And we're excited about that. We'll do that annually. Participants will be paid at a $15 per hour rate. This slide deals with language changes in regard to the use of tobacco, the use of electronic delivery systems like e-cigarettes, e-cigarettes, illegal drug use or alcohol use, or illegal use of prescriptions. We didn't have anything like that in the contract. So it was time to put that in there. It is in the board policy, but now it's also in the contract as well. We had a language change for posting of vacancies, simply to ask our employees to notify their immediate supervisor if they happen to apply for a vacancy within 24 hours. Now, if you're hunting for a job, and it's getting close to the summer, and you're hunting for a job, we're not going to ask you to notify your administrator every single time you apply. But the first time that you go to apply, we ask that you notify your administrator, just so they have a heads up. Section 6.18 recognizes that our essential support professionals need professional development to be as successful as they can be. They want it, and they need it. So this slide talks about, in our conversations and negotiations, we agreed that we would do an annual needs assessment survey for professional development. Put out there, find out what para-professionals, what are people out there working with the children think they need in terms of professional development, and then move to offer those things on an annual basis. And we've agreed to work with the MESP group in order to put together that survey every year, so that it's a combined effort. Section 6.22 deals with complaints against employees. This simply outlines the procedure that administrators and supervisors follow when there's a complaint. We wanted just to clarify the language a little bit to ensure that everyone understood if it's an allegation of child abuse or sex if it's an allegation of child abuse, uh, or, uh, sexual harassment, that has to be handled legally a certain way, and we wanted to just clarify that those procedures might not necessarily outline a complaint related to child abuse or sexual harassment. We have miscellaneous provisions here and changed the language just a bit, if you remember, we had classroom subs at the school level, every school had a classroom sub, and they subbed when there were va- uh, when there were absences. Now that we don't have that position, our para-professionals sometimes have to fill this role if we cannot find a sub to, to serve in the classroom. We wanted to afford our para-professionals the same monetary value that we did to our classroom subs. If a para-professional by chance has to sub in a classroom for ten consecutive days in the same classroom, on the eleventh day, we will provide, uh, a thirty-minute per day payment at their daily rate of pay, because there's lesson planning involved, there's a lot to it when they're consecutively in a classroom like that. I was very excited to add the bereavement leave to our M E S P contract, um, this protects an employee who happens to be out of accrued leave, let's say I have no more sick time, no vacation time, no personal time, for whatever reason, and a member of my household dies. Um, you are protected, and there is a five-day, uh, bereavement leave provided to you regardless of whether you have sick time or not, and you are protected. Nine point oh-six talks about that fifteen dollar per hour to our essential support professionals for participating in professional development when it's outside of their regular workday. We too talked about reopeners, um, and, uh, and making sure that we hold our bargaining sessions in, um, during times where our employees could actually come and hear the negotiations. So if, um, at all possible, we can do so, we're going to schedule those negotiation sessions at times where, uh, if I'm, uh, a clerk or a receptionist and I get off at two-thirty or three, I can swing by and I can hear negotiations maybe from three to five. So those are things that we also added to the contract along with, um, the fact that we can just agree now that we're collaborative, uh, rather than having an exact number of reopeners, um, when it's not a full book year, we're going to just try to agree, ah, to, you know, let's bring, can, can you do this in five, can you do this in four, and, and I think that we can all do that, um, so that was important to add to the contract. And finally, uh, addendum A is at the end of the contract, what addendum A does is it outlines all of the classifications, um, for the Marion essential support professionals. Uh, i- i- it's a list, it, receptionists and registrars, uh, para-professionals, um, special needs paras, it just lists every single, uh, job assignment, and we, you can see there in the first column, we removed several, we haven't had people in those positions in a long time, and it was just time to clean it up. So we removed those and we actually added service desk technician, um, the contract needs to be correct, so we thought that that was important to clean up. That's basically it, um, that was a full book year, next year it won't be, uh, and, um, and I was very excited about this, the progress of this.
Thank you, are there any questions? Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Grantham, I know he stepped out, but, um, I think it helps us to understand the process as we're, as we're, uh, voting on items, so thank you both for these, uh, very good presentations, yes, Mr. James?
We gonna vote on this right now?
Uh, yeah, we are voting.
I have a comment, but I'm only after we vote.
I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing.
Either.
Well, okay, uh, we have a motion to approve the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen collective bargaining, bargaining agreement for our Marion essential support personnel, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passed five, zero.
Can we ask the people that represent both M E A and M E S P to stand so we can?
Yes, I think that would be lovely, thank you very much, yes, would all of the representatives please stand? Thank you for taking the time to do that, it is an important job, Mr. James?
You know, I voted for it because I, I believe in it, but I also want, uh, to try and address something, I want to, you know, we had something a few minutes ago, like a, a student abuse and all of that. I'm looking for something where the superintendent can make a, a video and presentation, just like she did on, on, on abusive kids, on how these people, how they're being employed, and what's the philosophy about them being promoted? Because I, uh, one of the things that we have, we have a huge, um, workforce, and things that I, I get all the time is the process in which people are being hired. I want to make sure that everybody that's in the school system know, from the superintendent, what, what and why people are being hired. And when I, when I say that now, I know that we have people that are out there for years and even now have come some, some concern about why this person got the job and I didn't get it. And I would like to have something out there that, I want to, I want everybody to understand the philosophy of this administration in terms of how we hire, when do we hire, and why was this person selected over these particular person, and I would like for it to be visible so that people can see it. You know, just like if, if a person do something to a child, they're supposed to report it. I'm concerned that if, if a person is interviewing for a job and they, they see some unusual things taking place, that they have a way of knowing the philosophy of this, what they can do to report these things, because, and, and maybe you guys are missing what I'm saying, because there's a lot of people out here that think they should have got a job but didn't even get an interview. Uh, uh, and I want people to, to understand that, if we, uh, upfront with everybody, I want them to understand that, that they did, the superintendent had a philosophy, and it was adhered to. Our policies need to, every one of, uh, every one of those things, our policy need to govern those things, just like we give whatever policy that's being stated, it need to be stated so when people are looking at why they didn't get the job, I would like that, I, I would like for them to know, and I would like to know the philosophy behind, behind that, and see, this is, this is a bigot to me, because all of this is good, but I do know that we have some instances where people can feel that they're being abused because they simply didn't get a job, and Johnny got a job because he was some kind of Pete. And these things need to be clear, I don't know whether the union or N A M agree with me or not, but I, as a board, I know you all get those things too. And this is what I'm looking at, every employee to me should be able to see their, uh, their, our policies in reference to, uh, them getting promoted, and it should be coming from the director, directly from superintendent, just like we made a clear stand on child abuse, but we ought to make a clear statement on, uh, our hiring policies. And we need to do that because we, we're making a turn and we're getting ready to start hiring again, and I want to make sure everybody know they got a fair deal. That's my statement.
Noted, and?
Well, I, I, can I get something like that, do I have, am I the only one not seeing this, or y'all?
Well, I think you're probably asking, I, I, they probably already have it, like, there should be qualifications when somebody is hired that I'm sure Dr. Mayer and her team follow, so.
Well, and this is interesting, because it was brought up on May eighteenth and on April twenty-fifth, and where, uh, we were accused of nepotism, and it was refuted by, um, well, Mrs. King and Mrs. Stacy at the time, so I'm going to ask Mr. James that if you have a question about whom, who I've hired, if you would just directly talk to me instead of making broad general statements, and we could solve a problem, and if anybody approaches you with questions, please do send them to me, and I would be, I would be more than happy to meet with them.
If, if I'm looking at that little broad, that little single thing that you're talking about, I'm looking at something that every employee would have, just like child abuse, that, the one you just did on child abuse?
Mm-hmm.
Explaining the philosophy of the, of the school system and your philosophy and thing, I would like to see that, for every employee to see, and I don't want to get into this thing where I got somebody I want to bring to you, I want to see up there where you are explaining to all the, all the employees in the district, this is how the procedure, this is how we do it, this is what we're talking about. I don't want to get into Johnny told me something, I run to you, I want, I want this thing when people come and go into the school system, they can look up on there, or pull it up, and they see you saying that, and it, and just like you said a few minutes ago, you will have some skits or whatever on how people are interviewed and things like that. I'm looking for something to, uh, really add to what we just did here. Okay, and to me, that would be icing on the cake, when they walk in here and they look at the superintendent, say, this is how we do it, this is part of the board policy, two-one-two or whatever, and I think, uh, Ms. Oliver, you probably know the board numbers and stuff like that, and can make something like this, that's what I'm referring to.
Okay, noted, Ms. Oliver, possible more conversation with Mr. James exactly on what it is that he'd like, and let's pull up the board. Okay, thank you, all right. Thank you all, may I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a value of two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and fifteen cents. Six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifteen cents to Bellevue High School from Bellevue Girls Soccer Booster, two hundred and two thousand dollars to Family School and Community Engagement from the Monroe Regional Medical, sorry, the Monroe Regional Health System, Inc., one thousand dollars to Family School and Community Engagement from Judy Rathman, one thousand dollars to Howard Middle School from the town of Lady Lake, nine thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars to Madison Street Academy from Madison Street Academy PTA, two thousand, six hundred dollars to Marion Technical College from Florida Well Care Health Plans, Inc., eight thousand dollars to Marion Technical Institute from Marion Regional Manufacturers Association, Inc., three thousand and ninety-six dollars to Osceola Middle School from Osceola Middle School PTO, five thousand dollars to Reddick Collier Elementary from Grants for Great Ideas Public Education Foundation of Marion County, may I have a motion, please?
The move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Boynton, seconded by Mrs. King. All those in favor of accepting these fabulous donations, signify by saying aye. Motion passed five, zero, Mrs. Stacy, would you please thank our?
Yes, I would like to thank everyone that contributed to our school system, and that we just accepted your gracious gift. That coupled with the entire community gives us a gracious gift, every time they pay the taxes, they give us education, but they also give us money for our school system and for our referendum, and that is a gift that I would like to thank, not just the people that gave tonight, but I would like to know my, for the people to know my gratitude for the property owners who give us money every time they write that check, so that we can have music and art and programs in our schools that are something that, in my world, is as important as math, because there's so many children that gain so much from it, and probably the top of it is the vocational education programs that this referendum has allowed us to implement, and thanks to the great works of Mark Vianello in leading that, so I not only want to thank, since I don't get to thank very often, I'd like to thank for the contributions for tonight, but also the contributions from everyone sitting in this room that owns property and gives us money every time they write their property tax check.
Thank you very much. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, January eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen, at nine o'clock A M, the topics for the work session are the two thousand and sixteen, seventeen audit presentation, fraud prevention and detection, turnaround school update with financial presentation, bus purchases, code of student conduct, PBS update, the administrative briefing and work session will also include an attorney-client session. At this time, I will start with Mrs. King and ask you for any of your concerns or comments.
Okay, thank you, um, I just want to begin with telling everybody Happy New Year, and it's good to see everybody, looks like you're pretty healthy and happy, I know it's a sick time of the year, so I'm glad to see everybody here. Um, I would like to bring up, uh, I think we all received an email from Ray Seaman, uh, concerning putting the one mil referendum on the primary ballot, he stated that he is not concerned with the crowded ballot on the general election, and, um, Ms. McCall, I was just wondering if maybe at our next work session, if we can have discussion, you know, further before we just vote on it, and, that, on the twenty-third, I believe it is.
We can certainly, we can have a brief discussion on it, certainly, and we've all had the, the email, and I have been in touch with, with several people concerning this, and we can certainly discuss it. We want what's best, we want the referendum to be successful, and we need to do what's, what's in the best interest. Again, my concerns are all the constitutional amendments that will be on the ballot, a minimum of fourteen to sixteen.
Would it be possible for us to invite Wesley Wilcox, so maybe he could share some of his knowledge, or?
Absolutely.
I'm just throwing that out.
Absolutely, that's a good idea.
Okay, thank you, um, also, I would like to discuss, uh, testing, it seems there's been a lot of conversation about a significant amount of testing taking place, and in particular in our elementary schools, um, I would like to request a work session on how much testing has been taking place, I've been hearing different kinds of tests, because I've been out for three years now, but I'm hearing Q S M A test, teachers can't grade these tests or can't use them in the grade book, um, I've heard of D R As, I Ready, um, these are the few that I know about, so I'm just curious, and I think as a board, we probably need to know, so we can be informed, um, because there just seems to be a concern of the significant amount of testing that's taken place, so if we could have a work session on that, and then finally, in light of the request to close Evergreen Elementary, some topics have been brought to not only my attention, but all of us in particular tonight, um, and it, it's been brought up, like, how is the countywide mandate of not having homework going? Um, are our students reading daily, and how do we know that they're reading daily? Are our students learning their math facts, and how do we know that they're learning these? Another topic that's been brought up are what are teachers saying about recess, now that we have the untouchable, we're coping with academics and our referrals, um, what method of feedback, um, have we been receiving from our teachers to know if, you know, our new, what we've been asking them to do, is it working, is what we're looking for. Um, I'm looking to see, maybe there's room for change, or there's room for improvement, or maybe it's working out for us and we don't need to do anything, uh, we are at an end of the semester, and we're beginning a new one, and I think now would be a good time to assess it and us just be aware, we don't want it to be May, and then be like, no, it wasn't working, I would like to know at this point, yes, it is working, or I just, you know, so I just would like us to have some work sessions on those.
We will look, um, yes, we will definitely do that, let me get with Ann and see when we can put it on, because it, we should have it fairly soon at the start of the semester, so let me, um, see if we can move a few things and we'll get that on.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is that all, Ms. King?
That is it.
And Stacy?
Yes, I'd like to say a little bit about, um, Black History Month that's coming up, and, um, we have our events coming up soon, our Martin Luther King events, and I would like to share a quote from Martin Luther King himself, "Love is the only force capable of transforming an enemy into a friend." What led me to talk about that was I was listening to Alveda King, um, her father, and, um-
What led me to talk about that was I was listening to Alveda King, her father and Martin Luther were brothers and so Martin Luther was her uncle. And she shared her concerns that we speak so much about race. And she says, there really is no such thing as a ra, as a race of people. She said, we're all human beings. And historically, since the beginning of the writings, she said, we were human beings of different nations. We are human beings in an Ameri, in our nation, the United States, and we are referred to as Americans all across the world. We fight for America, we fight together, and only in division do we talk about race. It seems like that's the only time it comes up is when we're speaking about race. It seems like it's driven to divide us. Alveda King herself said this last week on the radio and she said, if all Americans saw one another as God sees us, we would have no understanding of what anyone's talking about when we speak of race. So I just wanted to share what she said. I found it very inspiring.
Mr. James?
I think most of my comments was made and I'd just like to commend all of you that worked on the contracts and things. That's a job well done. And my thought was to make sure we had put some icing on the cake and make sure that all, that everybody understand that when it comes to these jobs, they get a fair deal and they get a fair job. I thought that would come, it would, it, the best place would it come from the superintendent making the statement like she made the statement in reference to child abuse and things like that. I want to make sure that everybody there that's really worked real hard understand that the key to what we want to do, if we want to impact the lives of students, is through staff. And, and the staff that we work with is, is so important. So I want to make sure that, that this occur. The thing I'd like to just share with you is that we are beginning to make the turn and getting ready to do it again. We will be hiring this summer and we'll be looking for new teachers and we have people retiring and things like this. And it's one of those things where we got a chance to really improve on what we did the la, the last year. And this is one of the things that I'm looking forward to is the fact that we'll be moving into the year 2018 and hopefully we can move on some of the things that we missed on a little bit last year, but we can improve on this year.
Thank you. I want to thank to the, our board members, you know, Kelly, thank you, some of the concerns that you were talking about, that was very good. I know you put the homework, that's right, for home. It's something I wanted to talk, because I have so many parents call me, you know, they wanted, they said, especially with Evergreen, they were thought, thinking that if they had homeworking, it would have been, something would help them much better. But thank you. Nancy, you know, for every year, you talk about Martin Luther King and thank you, you know, I, every time I, every time I look at you, I know that you know what we're, you're doing, what's, what's the right things for us. You also know that when it, when it becomes black and white people, you just stand for all of us. You, you're not about that. You're just about the right things. Thank you, thank you. Of course, you know, and, and the reason I'm talking to everybody is I am a much better for, for talking. I want to say, you know, that the doctor did said that after the stroke, talking was really worse, but now it's so much better. So if anybody knows me, when you, when I'm talking, he said, just do it slow down and you can talk much, much better. And I want to thank you all for helping me too. For Evergreen, I will be at the meeting for anyone who, for the community or any, you know, please be there. And I just want to thank you all to know that if we can just come together and get all the ideas, we, we can, things will change. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
Happy New Year, everybody. And Officer Berry, Happy New Year to you. Thanks for being here tonight. Did you have a good holiday?
I did.
Awesome. Well, it's good to see you again. Earlier, you mentioned a work session coming up and I'd like to remind the board that I won't be here for that. It's the superintendent conference in Tallahassee. So Dr. Grantham will sit here in my stead as Dr. Hamm has a presentation for you all that day. Mrs. King, you mentioned testing and I have an email that I'll go back to the office and send to you that, I'll send it to you, that details the testing and the reason that we got backlogged on testing was Hurricane Irma where the state did not give us a leeway in the window for state testing. So we had to move ahead and kind of cram some testing in. And I think that may, our, our local testing, that may be part of the problem, but we had responded to an individual about that. Dr. Grantham, what, was that a month or so ago, that email, that we composed that? So I'll go ahead and forward that to you as we prepare for the work session so you all will have that information.
And while we're talking about this, can you also note, because I, I believe also in at least kindergarten, I believe when the students are assessed, they're assessed individually. So I'm curious how, what tests those are and how long each test is. Maybe if you could just break it down for the grade level and the test and the timings because all we're hearing is, it's a lot of testing. So I would just like to see it and.
Sure.
And stuff like that. Thank you.
Absolutely, okay. Thank you, thank you for that. A reminder that we have our Magnet Expo. So Wednesday, tomorrow is our high school one and Thursday is our elementary and middle Magnet Expo and that is from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. each night at the M T I campus on Fort King. Reminder that those applications and more information is online and the due date for that is in February. So that's why we're having the expo so that our families have the opportunity to make choices from all the great, great opportunities that are out there. Monday is Martin Luther King Day and for the first time, we have our bands participating. I'm very excited to share with you that Vanguard, Donellen High, Bellevue High, Westport, Lakewood High will all be participating. To go back to what was mentioned about referendum, that this was coordinated by Ms. Crowder, who is a, a product of the referendum. She was brought to our district office to help with, with things like this, much more than just this. But this is an idea of what the public sees because of the referendum dollars, this outreach. So our students will not only be marching in the walk, they will also be at the end of the walk. There will be a jazz band there. Mr. Jennings will have his jazz band there. We'll be playing the National Anthem. So it's, it's very exciting for us to be able to do this. So I wanted to share that and thank you to all of these band directors because again, the kids are off. Their schedule had already be ma, been made before we asked them to participate, but they rose to the occasion and our kids are going to be in there, much like the parade, right Kevin? The, yes. So we are very excited and we thank them for that. We thank them for that. A reminder that we have that community meeting about Evergreen and that is going to be at 5:30. Let's correct that, it's at 5:30 on January 16th. Now, the reason that we're having, Dr. Grantham, that meeting is it was mentioned when we had public comment about Evergreen that there was something that we had overlooked in 7069 about these community assistance team meetings and that's exactly what this is. We have been, we have this process in place and so I wanted Dr. Grantham to stand up there to give you firsthand information, but it is, yes, it is, it has been communicated to SACS and I have a list of people it's been communicated to, but do you want to address that briefly because I've got a block?
I want to go on to you, Superintendent. The C A T is a community assistant team, so it's not just one school, it's several schools.
Yes.
The schools that are included right now, they're cohort patterned. So there's Legacy, Stanton Weirs there, Harborview, Greenway, Lakewood High School as a, as a feeder pattern, Oak Crest, Wyamina, Greenway, Evergreen. They've all been having meetings. The people that attend these meetings are principal, the psych chair, the P T O president, community business partner, churches, early learning coalition. They're communicated out from the principals, their phone calls, if there's no emails. So there's a lot of back and forth going. They've already, they had one in September, there's one scheduled in January and there's another one scheduled in May, I believe. So there's three schedules. So it's not just from one school, it's several school and it's a way to get the community involved in what's going on at the school. And, and the feeder patterns has been a beautiful situation with the elementary to the middle to the high. So it's happening a lot.
Okay. Can you wait just one second? And also then on January, based on your feedback from the January 9th work session, when we proposed our original plan, now let's remember that that, the original plan that we brought to you, the recommendation was based on the parameters of 7069 because respectfully, it was mentioned by the board that after 7069 was passed, we got to deal with it. It's here and let's deal with that and I respected that. So when we moved forward, we based our recommendation on that. However, I was so pleased that there were some door openings that perhaps if we move now, there's that gray semantic area that we can move in because we would then be owning this before the state comes in and would tell us that we had to close. So with that, immediately after the work session, we started moving on two comments that were specifically made, that this is an opportunity to turn something horrible into something that's good, Mr. James, and what is the price of failure from Mrs. Stacy. So we started moving on that and at the next work session on the 20, the next one's 23rd, that next Thursday, Ann, we have an alternate plan where we will, with, with your approval, we can keep these kids closer to where they're at, a better situation while you all decide if you want to rezone, but we can do it. We can do it and it's because you opened that door for us. So while we work that semantic gray area, we're going to move forward in what's best for kids. So we will bring that to you with the work session along with the dollar amount. And, and it was mentioned earlier too, that maybe a Saturday school or bring them in, but please remember, we already have extended learning opportunity there. They're already going this extra time. We're not blaming anybody. I made that quite clear when we started this, that this is not a blame game. The pieces came together to create the situation. It's been going on, you all know this, since at least 1998 when we started tracking school grades. We did not create it, but we have to fix it and we can. And so we look forward to this next work session. Thank you. We were also very excited and I forwarded it to you today that we received a letter from the Riley Arts Center where they are very excited that if the plan does move forward, they are prepared to become not only a business partner of this potential new magnet school for the arts, but they want to be more of a vestment, a presence on campus where they will mentor these kids, they will take them under their wing, they will, as Ms. Gerlock says, you have to see it to be it. They will be the B so the kids can see and they will be a physical presence and a vested partner in this opportunity. So I got this information to Mrs. Anetti right away because we are so grateful that Kwanis currently is one of the business partners for Evergreen and has really taken Evergreen under their wing that way. So she will communicate with them that they will still be welcome if they choose at this potential new school because we can have multiple partners or we certainly can find them another elementary school if they wish. So we will take care of Kwanis and thank you friends at Kwanis. And what do we do with a chance? Previously, I had read the, what do you do with a problem? Well, there's a series of these and this is, what do you do with a chance? Because right now, we have a chance. We have a big chance and our kids have a chance. So, "One day I got a chance. It seemed to show up, it acted like it knew me, as if it wanted something. I didn't know why it was here. What do you do with a chance?" I wondered. "It fluttered around me, it brushed up against me, it circled me as if it wanted me to grab it. I started to reach for it, but I was unsure and I pulled back and so it flew away. I thought about it a lot. I wished I had taken my chance. I realized I had wanted it, but I still didn't know if I had the courage. When another chance came around, I wasn't so sure, but I decided to try. I went to reach for it, but I missed and fell. I was embarrassed. I felt foolish. It seemed like everyone was looking at me. I decided I never wanted to feel that way again. So after that, whenever a chance came along, I ignored it. And the more I ignored them, the less they came around. Until one day, I noticed I hadn't seen a chance in quite a while. It was if they had all disappeared. I started to worry, what if I don't get another chance? I know I acted like I didn't care, but the truth was, I did. I still wanted to take a chance, but I was afraid and I wasn't sure if I would be brave enough. Then I thought, maybe I don't have to be brave all the time. Maybe I just need to be brave for a little while at the right time. I realized it was up to me. I promised myself that if I ever got another chance, I wasn't going to hold back. If I got another chance, I was going to be ready. Then one seemingly ordinary day, I saw something shining far off in the distance. Is this possible, I hoped? Could this be my chance? I had to find out. I ran as hard and as fast as I could toward it. I didn't, I don't know how to explain it, but the second I let go of my fears, I was full of excitement. It wasn't that I was no longer afraid, but now my excitement was bigger than my fear. As I got closer, I could see that this was a really huge chance. By this time, I was ready. As I came by, I reached out and I grabbed it. I held on with all my might. It felt so good to soar, to fly, to be free. I now see that when I hold back, I miss out and I don't want to miss out. There's just so much I want to see and do and discover. So what do you do with a chance? You take it because it just might be the start of something incredible."
Thank you, Dr. Mayer. Mr. Gibbs, do you have anything for us?
I do not, thank you.
I just want to wish the Public Education Foundation a lot of luck this weekend. Their big golfing sneakers and smores 5K run happens this weekend. It is a fundraiser for our Tech Stock and Children program. You can still register for the 5K sneakers and smores run on Saturday morning. You can go to P E F M C dot org and you can come out and run with us for a 5K run. I also want to say that I attended the Robot Palooza at Forest High School on Saturday where many of our students, elementary, middle school students made these robot, it was amazing, the Lego robots and they were having these competitions. It was a lot of fun to attend and it was amazing to watch these children steam as alive and well in, in Marion County. I also want to publicly thank Dr. Mayer for her communication that has happened in the last few weeks. She is communicating well with the board and I think it's important that our community know that.
So with that, before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through December 8th, 2017. Ms. Chulley, other than early reentry parents, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter? No? May I have a motion to approve the expulsions of students J D 18-26, J D 18-27, J D 18-28, and J D 18-29 with educational services through the remainder of the 2017-2018 school year and the first semester of the 2018-2019 school year?
No move.
Moved by Mrs. King.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. James. There's no discussion, please approve by saying aye.
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 This concludes the televised and business portion of the meeting. I declare a brief recess to clear the room prior to further discussing student discipline matters regarding early reentry requests. Recessed at 7:59.